Welcome everyone, we're back, we're open session. As always, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Ready, get.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the political institutions and the Constitution under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice in all.
All the other paper motions are not the agenda.
We'll move.
Any discussion? All the paper are not the agenda?
Aye.
All closed? 8:50. And, um, close session. We did discuss some potential, um, potential litigation. And I think we gave direction to settle one piece of litigation. And, um, we started the evaluation superintendent process with nothing completed. Can you hear me now? I said we began the, uh, the evaluation superintendent process, but we have not completed that yet. And, um, we discussed some potential litigation. But, uh, I think we even might have settled one. Uh, that's about it. Okay, so now we are going to have some public comment. Are you sure? And you have?
Okay.
Alright, let's do that. So you guys substitute teachers union?
So, um, the item that, um, just to speak to, we have an opening for, um, the United Substitute Teachers Union. And we provide a lot of support for the public hearing. It was a virtual.
Yeah, can, can you go to the microphone, please? No, that's, that's fine. Okay. Yeah, I mean, aren't we going to hear the public? Does anyone have comments? About the United Substitute Teachers Union opening negotiations with the district in 2016-17? For compensation? No? And, uh, looks like it's... And so, alright. Vocal? We have to have emotion there, right? Communications, presentations, let's move on to acknowledgements which all the kids are here for.
We have three announcements on public hearing.
Yeah, I don't understand, what's the difference between number one and two? United Substitute Teachers Union opening negotiations with district in 2016-17. It's a year. District to negotiate with United Substitute Teachers Union in 2016-17.
Those are, um, open the same. They were, um, you know, the kind of interest to opening and negotiating over compensation.
So the subject of the sentences. Alright, and then, uh, local control accountability plan for 2016-17. We'll move that to paper. Do we have any comments on the LCAP? In public? About the 2016-17 budget review of the district's estimated reserve levels? Anyone talk comments about the reserve levels? Mr. Handbag.
Not right now, I mean, it's in your presentation, right? About the LCAP hand those, so we'd like to talk when the presentation.
Well, we, I don't think we're going to speak, are you, do you want to talk about the LCAP?
Um, it's in your presentation, right? People may want to have questions about presentations for LCAP and the budget.
So you'll have an opportunity during, um, yeah, you'll have both opportunity during, um, the actual presentations to give public comment.
Okay. Alright then. Close public here. And, um, let's move on to acknowledgements.
Okay, we have lots of acknowledgements tonight, and we're really excited that we have students in the house. Hooray! So we're going to start with honoring, I'm going to ask the board members if you'll come up in front, to acknowledge our students who participated in the Mathelics. So students, when your names are red, you're going to come up here, you're going to start, you're going to shake my hand, and then you're going to shake, um, all the trustees. These are our board trustees, and you're going to shake their hands, and we're congratulating you for your participation in Mathelics. And so, our board president, Stephen Kim, is going to read what the certificate says. He's just going to read one, and then all of you will be getting this language on your certificate, okay? When your name's called.
Come shake our hands. Not too hard now, okay? Mathletes. Certificate of Participation, Selena City Elementary School District hereby recognizes State of Maine for being the sixth grade mathel- Mathelic representative from State of School. At Monterey County Mathelics Competition, I was on May 14th, 2016.
Start with?
Um, Dylan Uribe. Ah ha! Ricardo Felix. Oh yeah, that's your own Roosevelt. Roosevelt. Alvaro Reyes. Edi Santos. Nicole Gomez. Lionel Estrada Limor.
So Rosa Velasquez, would you stand up one more time? Have you participated in the Mathelics, and thank you. Alcristia Estrada.
Okay, now for the, the students from Laurelwood. Great job. We have, uh, Jayden Espinoza. Christopher Lara. Hope this one's here. Lauren Villanella. Ethan Banyalos. Analia Martinez. Rhythm.
Okay. So Laurelwood, stand up.
Uh, and I have the sixth grade Mathelics students from Lincoln. Kyle Battican. Cole Ishimaru. Zachary Lee.
Is my water wired?
No. Uh, then I have the fifth and sixth grade students from Mission Park. Bargave Gulya. Emily Dairofuna. Max Fargas.
Here, go ahead, Max.
Um, Kelly Law isn't here.
Okay, but I think Kelly's here on behalf, well, let's do him last.
Okay.
You're next, I guess. Um, this, uh, this individual is also a sixth grader in mathematics. Comes from Cameron Elementary School. And the last name is Gonzalez, but, or the first name is Dejan Nada. The next one is a young man, a very young man, also a sixth grader at, uh, Cameron Elementary School. And his name is Jorge, or George Ramirez.
That's gorgeous.
And the next one is mine. Mr. Ramirez as well, got a scholarship, a scholistic achievement award. And this was, again, uh, mathematics department program, top ten. Do want to say something about that school, uh, Cameron, they've been working very hard, even though sometimes they feel like they're way overloaded with students, but at the same time, they're coming straight, coming right, coming left, and they're coming in there to be future leaders of the community. Thank you.
Don't forget to vote. We all set? Alright, uh, this is from, uh, Sherwood, Sherwood Elementary. Marisa Garcia, fifth grade. And, fifth grade also, Ruben Pencia. Good going, Ruben.
Good job. Congratulations.
Next is, uh, fifth grader also from Sherwood, Jasmine Soldana. And next, uh, this is a sixth grader, Angel Chavez. Uh, next sixth grader, Marco Orquise. And, the last sixth grader is Erica North.
And then we have three students from Mission Park who are receiving an award from the California State Senate. It's a Scholastic Achievement Award in honor of placing in the top ten in the Mathelics. So the first one goes to Samantha Love. Also from Mission Park, Riley St. George. And I don't believe he's here, but Samuel Low.
What we do want to say about Samuel is Samuel placed third place overall in the Mathelics contest. And, and for those of you that, um, weren't here earlier, um, Samuel also was one of our spelling bee winners. Um, so, we are really proud that Samuel placed within the top three. That's county, Y, regional, that's a pretty awesome award. So Samantha, you too, you did really good in the top ten, and, um, these will go to those families. Thank you.
And my best prayers, we need you on the sixth grade team.
Uh, we have some adult awards and recognitions also. Oh, I guess, um, Kelly, I forgot. I'm going to let, um, our, our board president read this one to Mission Park.
State of California Senate Certificate of Recognition. Mission Park Schools, Selena City Elementary School District. On behalf of the California Senate, I would like to congratulate the Mission Park School for their second place finish at the Mathelics competition for the fifth grade. I commend the staff at Mission Park School for their dedication to education of their students. Congratulations. And it's signed by Anthony Villanueva.
I would like to say this on behalf of the, um, their coach, Ms. Weaver. Go, Ms. Weaver!
Okay, um, husband and wife, I'm going to hand you. We're going to start with our teacher honor roll winners also. I'm not sure if they're in the audience, but.
Okay. Teacher honor roll winners, Salinas California Newspaper for their outstanding contributions to families, and, uh, in this case Roosevelt High, Joyce Roche. Same award, uh, this time for LCAP and, um, Chelsea's, or Jeff's?
So for those of you who have not seen, uh, these teachers are being honored by our Salinas California Newspaper. And they actually do a video. And so in our last newsletter, if you saw, they were all featured. And if you click on the link, and you click under their name, there's a link that goes directly to their video, and you can learn a lot more than what even was published in the paper. So congratulations.
And I have one more teacher honor roll for Laurelwood Elementary School, Mary Vesci.
What we can say about Ms. Vesci is, guess what? She got the front page paper on the day of the high school graduations. I mean, she even outdid that. Well, I saw it on the front, it was on my front page. Um, we also wanted to, um, honor our, some employees. Our CSCA employees, uh, also received some outstanding awards. These were Employees of the Year selected by their unit. And so we are proud, um, to give these, uh, employees recognition. They were honored at the CSCA banquet, which is a big to-do, and I had lots of fun. And, um, had the rodeo theme or the cowboy theme there. So we are going to honor the CSCA. This is a transportation employee, Karina Rangre.
And this is, uh, Member of the Year for Food Service, Elena Aguila. And the Classified Member of the Year President's Choice, Rosie Mesa. For Office Services, Martha Ruiz. For Special Services, Terry Adeta. And then, uh, Para Educator of the Year, Edwin Victorine Junior. And then for Maintenance and Operations, Member of the Year, Trini Mendoza.
Well, they were greatly honored at their banquet, and we will make sure that they get their certificates, and delivered to them. Okay. So we have three, I think that's it, like, three, uh, other awards that we'd like to recognize tonight. And I'm going to start with, um, I'm going to start with Cheryl Camming. If you can hold her, please. So for those of you who don't know, um, Cheryl, Ms. Cheryl's work. Cheryl is not only an extremely dedicated and committed employee of Selena City Elementary School District, but she goes way over and beyond the call of service. I can say this because I've spent many weekends with you, um, doing different kinds of things, or many evening kinds of activities where we've been at the warming shelter, where we've... So Cheryl was recognized in a regional award, um, as the Child Abuse Prevention Council for the Social Service Award in our entire region. That is quite prestigious award, and we wanted to make sure, Cheryl, that we recognize you from our own district for all of your contributions. Specifically, Cheryl's heart and her passion is around, um, helping the homeless and helping those in need. And, um, we are just so honored and privileged to have you as one of our dedicated employees. So congratulations. Is Samantha Richmond here?
Okay.
No Samantha tonight? Well, we want to honor, you want to come in her place, Joe? You want to come and at least receive the award on behalf of Samantha? So Samantha Richmond is one of our CSCA employees. Very active, um, in our, in her local chapter. And she is being recognized today, both also with a, um, award of recognition from the Senate and also certificate on behalf of our district for being chosen as a regional level for the Golden Bear Political Activist Award. And so we are so proud to be able to honor Samantha tonight. So on behalf of Samantha, would you receive that plaque? So, and last but not least, um, certainly not least at all. Um, we wanted to honor one more of our fellow teachers in our district, and Oscar Ramos. So Oscar, can you come forward? Oscar, if you could see what a hearty applause these young men are giving you in a front row. It was just to die for. It's really, can tell me that they really know you on a personal level. So, um, first of all, we're honoring, um, Oscar tonight, Mr. Ramos, for being a Stellar Migrant Educator of the Year Award. And certainly, we appreciate your, um, service and your commitment to our district. Oscar has been on the national circuit, on the state circuit. Um, he has, um, taken on a new role. He's also our, uh, the S E T C President. Um, so he is now the President of our, our teacher union. To award you specifically from the Senate, an award that would like to honor you for making a difference in the lives of our students, um, for the lives of our families. Your commitment, your dedication, your service, it goes way beyond measure. And, um, this Friday, uh, just like Cheryl was honored kind of at the, at that regional level with the Child Abuse Prevention Council, Oscar will be honored with the American Red Cross Hero Award on Friday morning. So we congratulate you, we're proud that you're part of our, our group here and our team, and we just look forward to what else is coming your way. Thank you. One more recognition! Okay, I forgot. Yeah, thank you. Anyways, give us a chance to get water and some water.
There you go. To the board, my name is Esteban Tavanzes, and I am the Vice President of Roosevelt Elementary School, but I also represent S E S D at, um, on the statewide level as a representative of the Board for COVID, the California Association for Fatherhood Education. So, um, the district has had a partnership with COVID for a while now, and, um, has been, um, a committee in creating, in helping to put on the conference. So this year for COVID 2016, there was about 545 representatives, 370 sessions, and it was the largest conference in ten years with over, with, uh, 5,074 attendees. Uh, but the following people had a big part, um, in creating the conference and putting it on. So I wanted to, um, come as a representative of COVID and recognize them. So, if you can come up, Martha Martina. And Rosie Sanchez. And Mary Preacher. And Mary Precher. This one's for myself. And Claudia Maras.
I just want to say that these folks are being honored tonight. They actually took a very, very active role from either serving at the registration booths to decorating for the different banquets. Again, this was a statewide conference with thousands and thousands of people in attendance. And so it takes a big group of volunteers to put this on. And this all happened during their vacation time, which was during spring break. And so again, I thank you for this recognition, Ms. Cervantes. But I also just really want to thank those volunteers because they made that conference happen. Thank you.
Ms. Ramos. Yeah, that's a good idea. Kids, if you want to go home and eat, well, you don't have any homework here. Go have fun, summer. You don't have to stay here.
Just take a minute when you're more than welcome. Joe, yeah, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Oscar Ramos, with the record. And I am the new president. I look forward to working with you all. I look forward to our meetings where we can continue the discussions sparked by Mr. Rodriguez and where we can start new conversations to new challenges. I know we won't always agree, but that's okay. I know we won't, I look forward to our disagreements as well. The important thing for all of us to remember is that we need to keep an open mind. Except that no party will get everything they want 100% of the time. And that we need to be transparent, always. We need to be able to work together and trust one another for the sake of those who we are here for, the students. So having said that, I would like to report the following. ALCAP, on May 31st, SETC, CSCE, and the district admin, we managed to discuss updates to the ALCAP. And you'll hear more about those updates later tonight on the agenda. However, SETC would like to discuss alternative ways on how teachers can provide more direct input into future ALCAP plans, other than surveys and how it's currently done. Overall, it was a good meeting. Negotiations. There are still some things that our negotiations team needs to finalize. We are hoping to get it done soon, very soon. The sooner the better. And the five professional development days. Many, many teachers attended the five professional development days last week. Mr. Martinez, I'm sure, has exact numbers on how many attended. We are, we're, SETC, we're working on getting some feedback. So far, there hasn't been much. But there's been a little positive feedback and a little not so positive feedback. We'll know more by the end of the summer. There was some concern, though, about the evaluations probably not being anonymous, since we were replying using our district email. So I guess my own question would be, were the evaluations anonymous or not? And that, this is my first SETC report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
CSCE Joe Sanchez, Chapter 149. I'd like to report, thank for the, thank you Martha Martinez for being there and did a dance last month. And in many senses, I helped serve and that we're there to serve members. Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Self-two teachers. Martha, you have the floor.
Okay. Well, I'll try to make it short. I was able to, the week after our last board meeting, which was on May 9th, began a whole series of open houses. And of course, because we have so many schools scheduled at the same time, on the same nights, it's pretty near to impossible for us to get across town during the heat of the traffic to make every open house. But we made every effort for either myself or for one of our assistant superintendents to be at every open house. I was able to go to Lincoln and Udon, Sherwood, Al Cabalán on the week of, May 9th, on the week of the 16th. I went to Mission Park, to Laurelwood. And then the following week was able to get Laurelwood, which I think was the last one that we had on that, on that week. Also, it was such a great time that we had the three assistant superintendents and myself rode a bus on May the 11th. And we delivered, if you haven't seen them around, these little burlap bags with our school logo, our district logo on them, to every one of our certificated staff filled with goodies. And so that was really just a lot of fun. And we started real early in the morning at the bus yard. And were able to make those 14 school runs pretty much by, in a few hours. And we continued and we did that for classified staff the next, the next week. So we were really excited about being able to share the little bags with the goodies inside to all of our employees and management included in that, that particular run. On Thursday, May the 12th, I met with a, with members of the grand, the civil grand jury who are doing a report around Salinas City, around English learners and the programs that we offer. We are still waiting, I thought we would have gotten, received that report. It was scheduled to be received last week. I didn't get it, so I'm assuming it'll come any day. And it will be made public within, I can't remember the amount of hours, 72, 48, so many hours after I receive the report and I read it. So I'm sure we'll have some findings in that report of how we can improve our instruction for our English learners, who by the way, make an over majority of the students that we serve in Salinas City. Let's see, what else did we do? We have board retreat on Friday, the 13th. And it was put and sponsored by School Services, who is an organization, a state organization, who has different consultants that come out. And they work on different, all different kinds of areas. Specifically, this one was around board management. We looked at, it was very short ways. We actually spent some time getting to know each other and getting to know a little bit about things that we may not know about each other. And so that was kind of a nice little activity. And then we began to talk about the goals of the district and how we needed to really look forward to rejoin our goals as we receive some more of our accountability data. So it was a, it was a very, it was a good day. On Monday, the 16th, we honored, and I don't, can't remember how many teachers those were. But we had our BISA Colloquium, which is a two-year program from which teachers participate in to get their clear credential. So teachers come in, they're highly qualified, they've done all their requirements at the university level. They've gone through not just their BA, but through another year and a half of coursework. And then they still have to go through a BISA program to get cleared. So on that day, we honored the teachers who were graduating and finishing off and getting their credentials cleared at the BISA Colloquium. We also, I also participate in the CAS, which is a community alliance for safety and peace. And that's hosted here every other Wednesday at 7:00 in the morning. And so there's always interesting reports sent out of what's happening throughout our community without, yeah, actually beyond even our city. But the things that are doing, that are either intervention, prevention around safety and violence prevention. So that's pretty much what we do there. As a result of participating in CAS, I also got invited to participate in CALGRIP, which is the Gang Reduction Intervention Program. And I serve on the advisory board for that. So I attended that meeting on that same Friday. Let me see. Oh, we had the Cowboy Reach assemblies going on at the school the following, oh, the following week. I think it was a week long series on the week of the 23rd. And we, that was really cool. All the kids got to come to the, and I know Rosie, you were part of that. And so through the Cowboy Porchery, rodeo event, Reach came, and kids learned, I learned about, a lot about rodeo stuff. And they did it in an interactive way. So that was really, really fun. Actually, they provided a lot, I mean, it was very, very low cost to the district to go to 14 schools and provide that assembly. And they fund the, they underwrite a huge amount of the travel expenses. I don't know if it's the rodeo or found the, I don't know who exactly pays for the other part of it. But we paid very little on our end. And we were able to have that for every one of our schools. Also during that week, we met with Monterey County Office of Ed. Just so you know, the process for the ALCAP, they review. And actually, our ALCAP has to be approved by the County Office of Ed. It, that's the state process piece. So they met with us preliminarily to give us feedback of where we were in the process. And that meeting was a very, I think, productive meeting. We also had a city and school joint meeting, which are the three school districts in Salinas. And we meet with the city administration. And a lot of our meeting was focused on traffic. And so we had had a traffic forum at Mission Park prior that month. And so I shared the notes that our board of supervisors, Jane Parker, had provided us. And those were shared with the city and the other superintendents. And they were very, very complimentary of the notes. And it really just keeps that topic very high on a list of things that we need to address. So I was able to participate in that. That week also, we, I went to Lincoln School for a staff meeting on May 28th to announce the new principal. And so there, at the staff meeting, Von Chitas was announced as the new principal for 2016-17 for Lincoln School. And Ron comes to us with a great amount of experience, over 12 years of experience, many of those years as principal. He took a break last year as a vice principal, part-time position, and he's going back full-time into a principalship. So we're excited about that. In addition, on Friday, the 27th, I was invited to be part of a supervisor, a superintendent, statewide superintendent advisory group called Early Edge, was a capital impact around the governor's proposal for early childhood block grant. And that was a very interesting meeting that went on for about two hours, the same time that the color run was going on at Mission Park. I took a break from there to go into a telephone conference with this group. And it's very interesting to be able to sit with some of the top superintendents throughout the state of California and be a part of that discussion. So that was, that was interesting. The following week, I had CAS again. Let's see, what did we do? Oh, more open houses, I guess. Oh, no, graduations, I'm sorry. Graduation, so we had sixth grade promotions. And I went to, was able to attend a few of those. And again, because they're all scheduled along the same times as many other schools, we're able to meet, you know, we're able to go to a few. Loma Vista University Park held their sixth grade promotion at Washington Middle School, which was very interesting. And the next morning, went to Atibida and went to Laurelwood. And so one of the things I do try to do, if you notice my, my selection, the open houses that I attend or the events that I'm attending, is trying to give a little bit of face time to every school. There's 14 schools in our district. And it is extremely difficult to get to every school, even once a month. So distribute my time as best as I can to get that, get to those schools. And then last week was our five days of professional development. We learned a lot from those five days, as Mr. Ramos said. There's feedback that we'll certainly take into consideration as we move forward with what we do for next year. So we also had a meet and greet on the 9th. Actually, I met with a few representatives on traffic in front of Mission Park because the Transportation Agency wants to do a press conference in front of Mission Park around some of those improvements that they want to do down, I'm assuming, as Acacia. We don't really know exactly what. But we met on Thursday afternoon. And then that was followed by a meeting at Lincoln School, where we had hopefully about 40 parents there who came to do a meet and greet. And we started at 6:00, so I think I left already 8:00. So there were lots of questions being asked and a lot of great, a lot of great energy in the room. And we really appreciated that. And that meet and greet was for their new principal, Mr. Chitas. And then today, right before 4:00 today, we had some honored guests in this room. We had a small reception for those guests. And I thank those of you who were able to attend. We honored those retirees from our district. So that's pretty much for the report.
Well, I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed our board retreat. It was the second one in 14 years, 15 years. And it's very beneficial. I'm looking forward to the next one. I mean, it's really nice when we get to know our fellow board members and what their priorities are and what sort of things they want for the district. That was, it was really nice. Because normally, we don't get to talk to each other. Brown Act prevents that. So the retreat was marvelous. Thank you.
That's enough. That's it? I was there too, wasn't I? Thank you. At this point, I just want to let my colleagues and staff know, who knows the audience, that I enjoyed myself at the annual Aho. Who do you call it? Do the dance, the dinner dance. And I invited family members of mine. And out of the two, only one showed up. So and that individual ended up being the last present, the last ticket. And I said, "See, when I give you a ticket, you'll get that." So she didn't believe that in the beginning. But at the same time, this morning, I spent time at El Gavilan. El Gavilan with first graders, young, young, young elementary school students. And the new teachers and the teacher teaming that was going on. And I just stayed there for maybe about an hour, hour and a half. But at the same time, I learned one thing. These kids are smart. They're smart. Let's not take them. Or just give them a challenge, work with them, and they'll come out with answers. And they were doing it. They were teaming up in twos. And they were giving answers on the language that they were learning. And that was how we evaluate and also how to project what you've learned to the rest of the people that were in that room. Again, right now, I don't have much to say. You know, a man of few words. And I just want to thank you very much for being here. And also honoring not only the people that were retired, retiring, or have retired. And there were some people in there that I remember from years back. But at the same time, we learned something from them. Said, one of them told me, says, "You know what? Just keep it up. Don't be tight, but keep it up." In other words, you're all doing a good job. These, my colleagues are doing a good job. You as a board is doing a good job. There's always bumps, bumps on that, on that road. But don't try to go around them. Go with them. In other words, get to the bump, try to get it fixed as a collaboration. And at the same time, we all become winners. Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you. Ms. Ish?
Ms. Ish.
Yes, I was able to attend quite a few open houses. Like Martha said, it's really difficult to get to everyone because of so many of them being on the same night and trying to get across town. But the other big thing is to try and get around to every classroom in the short amount of time that you have. You know, I now can understand parents with multiple children, how hard it is for them to be able to see everything. But lots of great things happening. I saw a lot of beautiful art continuing to be shown and displayed. Lincoln School did a marvelous job with kind of an art walk through their halls. And then they had a big dance going on out on their playground, which was lots of fun to see. I was able to go to two different kinds of promotions. I went to two sixth grade promotions, one at University Park that I think rivals the high school graduations, and another one at Monterey Park School, which was wonderful because my own children graduated or were promoted at Monterey Park School. And all I can say is how times have changed. But then I went to a preschool promotion, and it just warmed my heart to see these little ones who I know are coming into our school district, who are so eager, onstage, no inhibitions, just giving it their all. And the parents, so many parents, who were just not only very proud of their children, but you could see excited about the adventures to come. So it was fun watching those coming in and those leaving to go into middle school, kind of the same energy, not necessarily the same attitudes. The other thing that I got to do, that I don't know if you remember, but when they were talking about the Q Rockstar group coming in, I had quite a few questions as a board member. So I went to their training for part of the time. I was so wowed. It was really wonderful. And I thought I knew a lot about project-based learning. I mean, I thought I did. I knew nothing. It's changed. And I was very impressed with the presenters. I was excited about the enthusiasm I saw from the teachers, the collaboration time that they were able to have. I thought it was a wonderful day. And that's what I've been doing. Oh, oh, and then the board retreat. Thank you very much, Martha, for arranging for that retreat. Being a first-year board member, it was wonderful to set the tone, having an opportunity, like Foster said, to talk to each other and really get a sense of each other's priorities and, you know. One thing I can tell you, we all have a very deep passion for the children in this district, and that was very reassuring. I just, I think we're going to do wonderful things. And with hopefully more retreats in the future, where we can come together and really look at the kinds of things we want for our district. I think that would be wonderful. But thank you, Martha, for organizing that.
Buenas tardes, a todos. Good evening, everyone. I had the fortune of attending three graduations promotions, two sixth grade. I was a day late for the Boronda Dual Language Academy graduation, but there I witnessed what I would say is the most charming graduation I have ever seen, because they were, what were they, like pre-kinders, preschool? And I thought that was outstanding. I had a lot of fun being there. I also went to a promotion at Laurelwood, and that was very nice. There was a moment when a young man was introduced to the audience and to the sixth grade students there. And there was a big promotion when this young man was introduced, a lot of clapping, a lot of yelling by the sixth graders. But man, this must be a very popular individual. His name is, I believe he got an award tonight, Edwin Victorino. And Mr. Velazquez was saying a few nice points about him, that he had just finished his university work, and he was headed for Indonesia to do some paleontological excavations, and then he was going to go to Japan and teach English in Japan. I thought, man, I want to ask him, "Hey, take me with you." But I thought that was very nice, and it speaks to being able to acquire quality people and dedicated people who are great role models for our students. I also attended a Boronda Meadows graduation, which I thought was really outstanding. Having been a sixth grade teacher for approximately 10 years, you know, that really hit a soft spot for me because I could see myself, you know, back in those days and being there along with him. And that was very nice. And the board retreat, I thought, was outstanding, very productive. I learned a lot about my fellow board members that I would never imagine, and really outstanding quality people. Thank you.
So let's see, replies to previous concerns. Okay, so now we're going to list the individuals' desires as the board on issues that are not on the agenda. Did you hear Mr. Henry?
Hello, my name is Sean Henry, a parent, a member of the district. I first would like to say I'm glad I was a seat of recognition for Oscar Ramos. I've gotten to know him over the last couple of years. I've known him in the boardroom here. He showed his leadership at a time where the meetings were very, very tough. He stood up to speak out about some of the harshness and the racism, the racist things that were being said, and I really appreciated his leadership at that moment. I was blessed to meet him when I went to a serve day at our church to find out that he went to my church. And we had a great time, and I got a great time meeting his family, and I think we owe our boys a play, they really hit it off. And, you know, and then, of course, you know, at our church, he got brought up because we presented what he'd been doing as a teacher in the community. And, you know, we go to SPPCC, and most people know it as Loving Salinas, and the model now is Loving the Breakfast Abandon. And Oscar is definitely an advocate of that, you know, and children in this district are blessed to have. So I'd like to, we have some facilities information now. From January 26, 2015, when it was to speak about facility improvement at Boronda Meadows. And the analysis, in order to pass a $525,000 action, was the district continues to grow significantly, and through the past seven years, contrary to overall decline in K-12 enrollment statewide, SESD has had a 13% increase. So it was really pressed that we're growing. And it was specifically said that several schools with student populations approaching 900 are now considered overcrowded by educational program design and standards. They weren't mentioned, but it's Sherwood and Camden by those numbers. Basically, it's now essential that the district move to alleviate overcrowding to enhance instructional environment for existing students as we plan for even more students in the future. They passed the first phase of the grant, which is $525,000. Everyone knows Oberon isn't open up as a neighborhood school. It was open up as a dual language academy. I talked to Ms. Ish, gave some analysis, and really said, you know, from the previous presentation in April about student numbers, that you could see that the trend was happening, that we're in a downward trend. And the district actually lost 109 students this year, and that equates to $945,000. So we lost over a million, when last year, the data that was being presented was saying, "We're growing," contrary to what the state says. And I pointed out in that analysis that you could predict that it's growing. Next year, you probably...